Mayor Dick Leon. Deputy Mayor Zantano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Duty. Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Fornin.
Here.
Councilor Bood.
Here.
And Councilor Polichuk.
Okay, item two. Budget deliberations.
I think we have a presentation from Dave Ambrose, the assessor, to start off
Yeah.
as part of our budget deliberations.
Thanks, Rose.
Good evening. Usually I wait until February until I speak to the town council in regards to the grant list. However, this year is a re-bout year. So I wanted to wait until the Board of Appeals finished their duties. Mike mentioned during this budget presentation that the tax revenue increased by 1.77 million dollars. And I use the current mill rate of 33.58 for comparative purposes. That 1.77 million dollar increase equates to an asset increase of 52 million dollars or 4.14%. And that also equates to a 100% market value of 75 million dollars. I want to speak about the grant list, I'm sorry, the evaluation. During my 34 years in assessing, this is my fifth re-bout and by far my favorite. First of all, thank you for approving my choice of companies. They're great. This company, one of the reasons why I chose this company is because they're the only company in New England that has NAI's on staff. That means members of the appraisal institute, these are top-notch appraisers. They also personally value each commercial property in town.
Who was the company again?
Re-bout, visible valuation, they're excellent. They only do aggregate rebouts. And on my part, I, for quality control purposes, I checked the topmost 1,000 properties and the bottommost 1,000 properties, again for quality control reasons, and I modified around 2% of those properties. In some cases, and by the way, they're mostly commercial properties. For example, I felt for some properties, using a color approach, that the estimated gross rents were too high. Appraisers, assessors use estimated market rents and actual expenses, so I modified the numbers a little bit. The purpose of re-bout is to equalize assessments. So every property owner pays their fair share of their property taxes. That's actually the first thing you learn in assessor school. And the goal at re-bout is to have the assessments at 70% of their fair market value. But during the five-year period between rebouts, property values fluctuate, they appreciate and/or depreciate. For example, let's say Colonials increased in value during, over the course of revaluation for five years, and let's say ranches decreased in value. So what happens is, if you take a snapshot, let's say three years from now, and you say Colonials have an increased in value, the gap between the fixed assessment of 70% and the new market value increases resulting in a lower ratio. And for this scenario, let's say 65%. And let's say that the ranches decreased in value. So the difference, the gap between the fixed assessment of 70% for ranches and the new market value for ranches has tightened, so that pushes the ratio over 70%. So in this scenario, Colonials are paying less than their fair share and ranches are paying more than their fair share. And this is what revaluation is for, to fix this problem. Okay, now the board. Again, I wanted to wait to see how many appeals we had before I talked to the town council. And we had 21 appeals. And that's, I think it's pretty amazing, just 21 appeals, 11 commercial appeals and 10 residential appeals. Again, using the current mill rate of 33.58 for comparative purposes, the board reduced tax revenue, the amount of $48,000 or 2.7%. Any purported valuation inequities were finalized at that PAA level. So what I'm saying is that there's not going to be any court cases. We're not going to pay any legal fees for attorneys or court fees. So the net result would be that, I said, I mentioned, like Mike mentioned, the revenue increase for this year's grant list was 1.77 million, and the board gave back roughly 50 million, 50 million, I'm sorry, 50,000 in revenue. So I think we're holding firm at 17.65 million dollars. Just briefly, over the course of our six years together, including this revaluation, we realized an aggregate revenue increase of $3.6 million with a reduction of only $120,000, $120,000 due to PAA and court appeals. So that's why I said I think this re-bout was very, very successful. Any questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Want to move on to police?
So in the general government services, so we're in the, in our black binder book here, so that encompasses all of the departments. The only thing that I have in the police budget is, so one of our questions prior to budget was, we wanted to know the percentage of increase that was figured into the budget for union contracts and admin, because we know their contracts are up for renewal this year, and so we were told 2.5%. Anthony, was that like on all the secretaries?
Yeah.
Because I-
Everything about how this works is settled.
I know, but when I looked at last year's budget book and then I looked at this year's budget book, and on the secretaries, the salaries were the same. There was no 2.5% increase. So-
It's a contingency.
Oh, so it's not in the budget-
It's not in the department, because it's unsettled, we can't, if I get what it's going to end up being, we put the money in contingency.
Well, that's, well, sometimes it was like 1% or 1 in the budget book and then the remainder we would take out of contingency.
If they tell you 2.5 in contingency.
So you, it's all in contingency then?
Correct.
Okay, so in the, I noticed in the salary for the secretary for the police department in last year's budget book to this year's budget book, it shows a 15% increase.
They had a bump halfway through the year. So-
But it was, her salary dropped 15%?
It shouldn't be 15%, but they did have a bump halfway through the year.
Well, when I took what was in the budget book for this year and then compared it to what was in the budget book for last year,
Yeah.
it was a 15% increase, which just seemed out of proportion to everything else. So that was the only thing that we need to look, that was the only thing that I noted in the police department. Anthony, if you could check that and get back to us for the meeting next week on there.
And I think that's partially because for half the year she was paid at one rate, then the second half she was paid at another rate, and then now this entire year she's paid at that second rate. So I'm not, we'd have to go back and double-check the numbers, but that's why it was an increase on her, herself.
Yeah, I mean-
But I'm not sure the 15% will have to double-check.
Yeah, that was, the 15% is what I'm questioning. I mean, if it was a couple percent, that would be understandable, but 15 just seemed a little high.
If anything, the mid-year increase should keep it down, because half the year you covered for this year and it's only six months.
Yeah, I'm not sure why-
Yeah, so we'll just-
Why it just been a fat finger on something.
So we'll check that and see once what, that's all that I have. I don't know if anyone else had anything from police, but that was the only thing that I noticed in their budget that I was looking at.
Anyone else have anything on police? No. Okay. Anything on fire?
I didn't have anything on fire, on the fire departments, but I'm not sure if anyone else had anything.
Okay. We just wanted to do police first in case, you know, you had to leave for any reason. Okay.
So do we want to just go down the list here?
Yep.
Okay, so in finance department, so when is the anticipated switch-over to Munis? Because I guess that's the way we're going, to the new system. Is it, are we targeting for July 1st and is it a gradual, you know, switch-over? How does that work?
It will probably be, the entire 21, 22 year will be on the current software for both of us. It'll probably be July of '22 when we make the break.
Okay, because I, the reason for my question is because of the data processing charges in the budget on the current system, and if we were switching over, why would we have to pay data processing on the old system?
Correct.
So, okay, so we can not do anything with that one since we'll still be on the old system. Okay, on assessor, this increase is going to just take effect, the only thing I had in the assessors was the full-time account clerk, the salary difference, and that's being taken care of through contingency. So I don't have anything else under assessor. Under central services, so I noticed that, and I know we've talked about this, you know, throughout this year so far, of the request for the secretary going from 25 hours a week to full-time. And I noticed that that change was made in the budget. Personally, I don't think we have gotten all of the information in regards to the need for this.
Are we talking about purchasing, is that, which secretary?
Yes, central services is purchasing. Right. One of the big things that we had talked about was that secretary also helps social services during the busy time, and we had talked about, is it possible that the senior center, park rec, since they're in the same building, could that staff help out during the busy time instead of taking the secretary from down here to go up there? And there is a position in park and rec that has not been filled for two years and is still in their budget, and if that position is filled, would that enable them to help out for social services during the few months that they have that they have increased demand? So my feeling is, and, you know, we can discuss this, but I just think that we should keep it at part-time, right, at the 25 hours right now, and if the need is proven during the year, we can always switch it and take the difference out of contingency if we decide to move it from part-time, or the 25 hours to full-time on there. It's a difference of about $15,000, but that's my opinion.
Have we gotten, have we received any kind of response as to whether or not the person over park and rec can do this? I don't think we've ever gotten a response.
Right, that's part of the reason, is we haven't gotten any information back, and they have that one position that hasn't been filled for two years either, so that would be another staff member that they would have on board if that position was filled.
Can someone refine, the full-time need, was this, can someone recap whether this was due to a temporary need, or is this, you know, something that's a long-term need? Because, I mean, you wouldn't want somebody to be pulling back and forth and be divided that way if this is an ongoing need.
Yeah, it had been a, previously, in the past, going back, I guess, a few years, seven, maybe, maybe longer, a full-time position, came in part-time position, I think recently, within the conversation around the capital projects, building projects that we're doing with respect to the high school, TD, middle school, so forth, and telecommunications is going to come down the road as well, from a bidding and document standpoint, pushing through all that information.
Was that receding back to half-part-time from a full-time position? What triggered that? Was it that there was nothing, that person didn't have anything to do, or was that we're having a financial issue or a budget issue? What prompted receding to part-time?
I really, I, and again, before, I think Anthony could probably speak to it, or Michelle, certainly, but I think the person in the position wanted and was close to retirement wanted to, and I may be misspeaking, so I probably should defer to them, because it really was in the works before I got here. So if Michelle wants, or Anthony can speak to-
I guess, yeah, whoever's most impacted by this, I would love to hear what they're, what they think the need is.
Hi, I'm Michelle, I'm the purchasing assistant for the town with Frank Fuddy and the risk manager, too. As Mike said, the secretary I had at the time was full-time, was looking to retire, and we were done with the MBIS project. So during, when construction was going on with MBIS, she was full-time, the town held the contracts for all of that. And then she was looking to retire and just work part-time. There was some conflict with the union at the time, giving up that full-time position into a part-time position. It was agreed to that she could work part-time until she had retired, and it has remained that way for all these years. With being the risk manager and the purchasing department, it's, and then my secretary is also secretary to social services year-round. As Rose said, there's times of the year, it gets very busy, so she's taken out of my office, gone up to social services, so the work in my office doesn't get done during the busy times. The rest of the year is the constant answering on the phone, processing purchase orders, bills that come in from my department, she handles initially, I approve them. Now that we have the construction contracts, construction projects going on, we, the town, are required for the high school project to do requests for qualifications for certain services, commissioning agents, so forth. So we're right now probably processing three to four RFPs every week. They either go to permanent project, they come to town council for review, so forth. This will continue for the next 30 months. There's always going to be something that the town has to hire mandated by the state for reimbursement. We're going to have a police station for the next 12 to 18 months. We have the communications coming up. Next summer, we're looking at roof for Stanley T. Williams and whatever we're going to do with the MBIS project. So it's a constant, you know, paperwork.
But the high school project, Gilbane, is in charge of a lot of the contracts because they're the construction manager at risk.
They are for the subcontractors to build the project. We, the town, are obligated and the state statute to hire material testing, third code review.
Which is all happening now.
Which is doing now, which-
But those don't continue for all 30 months. Third-party review isn't at month 24.
No, but there could be others that the state requires for reimbursement, so it's not, and then there's also the processing of paperwork that goes with these projects to purchase orders, invoices that come in. She helps assist with the permanent project building meetings. Michelle sends the minutes and the agendas and helps me making copies for the group and so forth, so there's constantly something going on in the office. Like I said, she also assists social services and whatever.
So how many hours a week would you say she assists social services?
Well, right now, since the governor extended fuel assistance, that's now through June, so she has to contact between 80 and 100 peoples, my understanding, that that program is still going on, so that's taking away from anything to do in my office. If the governor extends that again, it's all that processing of paperwork and contacting people.
Okay, so that's it, so the question was about how many hours a week does she get taken away to do stuff for social services?
Probably about an average of 10 hours a week.
It sounds to me like we had a full-time position and it became a half-time position, not due to the town's needs, but due to a person's individual's retirement needs, is how that was just presented, and I feel like, you know-
Well, we finished building a $40 million school in MBIS.
Yeah, yeah.
And she stayed on through that. And then you go back to the normal amount of work that's done.
Yep. And now we do have a long stretch of stuff happening. We have, I mean, I don't know, I can understand that's got to put a lot of pressure on.
And she also assists with, you know, we have workers' town claims, lawsuits and so forth, so that's also part of her position, too, is helping me with those. And, you know, I follow up on work with town claims, deal with the town attorneys on any lawsuits that come through, so it's, it could change daily, you know, this. So I'm hoping that the, you know, town council really thinks hard about this. We, there's not much you can get done in a five-hour period. She also does the mail, they're answering of the phones when we're under COVID, all the acceptance of the supplies coming in through the front door, so it's, it's constant. You know, like I said, we're redoing all the RFPs and RFQs for the construction attorney we just hired, so we're redoing those again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, but I think part of our job, this is, you know, we need to look at this as an opportunity, if there are other ways to shift and get, and get the, accomplish the same task, and that's what we need to look at. And I think that's what we're, we've been asking for, for information and to make the right decision.
Yeah, I think these are all fair questions, and I think, I think that is certainly something you want to try to do. I also want to make sure, I mean, I'm seeing that people are under a lot of pressure, and we don't know how long this will continue. I mean, between the high school project, between, you know, all of the, you know, there are a lot of changes to how our elections are being run now, there are a lot of changes, and I feel like, you know, I just want to make sure that they have the support that they need, because we have a lot going on, so I want to make sure that it's, you know, they have the professional support they need.
So the next item in central services is in line item, it's account 4136.31, facilities maintenance, and there is a budget item for $2,000 for town hall concrete repair. And in the current budget, in the 2021 budget, we have allocated $150,000 to repair and install stairs and do concrete work at the town hall. And, and also, we have established the maintenance fund that Franny is now in charge of, to take care of this type of things. So I would like to make a motion to delete $2,000 from account 4136.31 for town hall concrete repairs.
I'll second that, I agree, because we've had this money, we started a couple years ago talking about having it, we should be using it.
Right.
That was 4166-11?
4136.31.
I must have left it in the car. I had it, I don't have it on it, but.
Can I extract a little bit, no?
$2,000.
Or I think you took mine. I think you took mine.
No, she did.
I know, just kidding. Any other discussion?
Good evening, would you like a roll call, or would you like?
No, I don't think we need it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, the next one is ambulance. So this is an account that we discuss every year, it's in the red every year. So there was, we did increase it some last year, and I see there's a larger increase in for this year. So there's a $75,000 increase in for this year. So I would like to make a motion to decrease account 4225.308 contractual services by $50,000. This will still give a $25,000 increase over the current budget.
I'll second that for discussion. Could I just ask the fire chief why it was such a large increase for next year?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Why it was such a large increase for next year?
Well, which account were you taking?
$50,000 in contractual services for the ambulance.
For ambulance, for ambulance.
So I believe it has to do, Anthony, I'll reach back to you with the laptop right there, contractual wages for Bintec management?
Yeah, that's an accurate plus coupled with the fact that our billing revenue was down in 1920, about $20,000 under the budgeted number that we have received. So those two items, as the chief had mentioned, increases in the contractual obligations for the contract that we have, as well as the decrease in billing revenue due to, during COVID times, our call buying diminished.
Thank you.
But the amount that was budgeted won't necessarily take us out of the red, correct?
That, at the 250 number, brought us to a $4,800 positive balance. That's why the 250 was put in there, to bring it to the black. Manager reduced it down to 225, which we yielded about $20,000 negative balance based on our current projection, so if you're going to knock 50 off of that, you're talking about a $70,000 negative fund balance when all is said and done, if the projection's hold.
Anthony, are those wage increases you referred to, the $30,000, is that locked in or projected, or how did you come up with that number?
It's a bid that was done probably three years ago with the contract labor. There are gradual increases every year on what they bill us for a paramedic per hour and so on, and that's what that's doing.
So that's the actual aggregate of those contractual increases for the upcoming year?
Correct, yeah, there's one year left on that contract with Bintec management, but that's the largest mover in the expenses, is the contractual obligations.
I'm going to withdraw my motion at this point in time and we can always come back to this. Did you want to say something, chief?
Yeah, just kind of an FYI and legally, and it goes back to Councilman Warren's question about the Vintec side, you know? So there's always been this thought process of instead of paying an independent contractor, why doesn't the town hire its own staff to provide these services? Hence, over a year's period, there should be a total reuse cost when you look at what the contractual obligation to Vintec is. So again, questions from our staff have kind of been posed to us. Well, let's sit down and let's try to calculate this out. And we basically say, hey, listen, you know, right now the town doesn't pay any type of insurance. They don't pay workers' comp. It's all the contractual obligation by the third party here that most of our people work for. But there's, there's always that possibility of, you know, in the next fiscal year, okay, let's look at what it would actually cost if it was operated in-house as opposed to farming it out. Because there's, there's a significant difference on what we pay Vintec and what they pay their employer employees. So when you look at the comparison of other EMT and other paramedics that are working for other services compared to what they're being paid in North Banford, it's relatively low here. Not to say that people that work for another service come here to do a lot of calls because many of them think of it as I'm coming here for a little R and R and to answer really true emergencies that happen in our community as opposed to other types of calls that they go on to in other urban areas. So it's something you may want to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So I withdrew my motion.
I withdraw my second.
And we can always come back to this next week, depending on how the budget's looking. Next area is refuse, forty-three oh two. And so I'm, based on our conversation that we had at the public hearing or at the council meeting the night of the public hearing, I'm concerned about whether we have enough tonnage. If we're, if we're too light on the tonnage, based on the conversation about how much in the past year, and I know the past year has been extraordinary with COVID and people being home and there was probably a lot of cleanouts done and and everything else. And I did notice that the tonnage from last year to this year's budget book is increased by five hundred tons. And just wondering if that is a good estimate? Or is it too low?
Well, I think you've, I think you've got to look, yeah. Well, if you're taking MSW versus bulky waste, and I think we saw increases on both sides. But it's hard to know. And again, if you, for for budget purposes, you want to, you want to, you know, add to that, it's probably a prudent thing. But again, I don't want to overcook it, so to speak. And it's just a really hard, hard to say because this is, this is just an anomaly in terms of the pandemic that if, I think maybe what we can do, if if possible, is to to dig, so to speak, into the, into the numbers. If we can go back to look at, trying to get out of the anomaly and look back in terms of what a trend might show us in terms of their budget book over budget book and look or just looking at tonnage numbers of was it.
Well, you must have actuals, right? Because you get the monthly, so you have actuals for the last two years, like pre-COVID and COVID.
Yeah, right, right.
That you can look at to see. And the other thing is, I know, I know we haven't settled the contract on the trash yet. And, you know, this is assuming Wallingford, the trash going to Wallingford on here.
Potentially.
Yeah, well, that's, I, that's the way it looks like these numbers are were based on that. So I just don't know if, if that's the case, based on the information that was given to us, this would be low. If, if, because the recommendation was to go with all waste. And if this is going to Wallingford, there was a difference in there. And I know you're doing that. So I think for the next, you know, our budget meeting, there's, I don't think there's anything we can do tonight on this. We just need more information as far as tonnage. And also, you know, one of the things we have to do is is settle the trash contract or come up with something in the budget where we think it's going to be, if we don't settle it next week, where we think this is going to go so that we're a little bit safer.
What numbers in that book?
Well, it's one million, four twenty-nine, four hundred.
I just wanted to make sure it's the same as the last, the last book we got done on the last meeting. Okay?
But that's, that's assuming that it's going to Wallingford. And if, if it comes back that Johns isn't going to go to Wallingford, it's going someplace else and that changes, then that will change this on here. So, so there's a couple of pieces to this that we need to look at for our next meeting. Sure. On there. Michelle, did you have anything?
Well, the tonnage for this past year through Mira was twenty-four hundred tons of MSW. So in the budget, we put in forty-seven hundred tons. The current year, so that would cover garbage. In the past two years, we have not had to worry about recycling through Mira, but we do have tonnage on what it actually was. So that's where the thirteen hundred came from. And then, as Mike alluded to, with COVID this year, the bulk was out of left. I honestly feel by the coming fall pick up, we'll go back to normal. I envision the spring coming up next week is going to be high. And that would be in this current year budget. So the numbers that the all-in from Johns is less than the actual budget based on what they gave us with their tipping fees. So I think the numbers are pretty accurate, but Mike and I can certainly sit down. We've already had a discussion with Johns on an all-in number, which is what the town council requested at the last meeting. We're having a meeting tomorrow with All American on an all-in number. My definition of all-in is you don't get paid a penny more than whatever number they're going to come and give us. It's not going to be the tipping fees of just monthly by the weight. They're going to have to determine based on what the tonnage has been over the years, that that has been a trend, gone up slightly each year. But we tracked it through the mirror tickets because we pay the tipping fee. When it was an all-in rate with Johns, they would give us tonnage rates each year, each month, you know? And then it started out about four thousand, then it went to about forty-two hundred. This past year was forty-four hundred tons of MSW. And the budget now has forty-seven hundred tons of MSW.
So what, so if it's an all-in and let's say, so we estimate forty-seven hundred here, but the actual at the end of the year is forty-five hundred. So are we paying just on the forty-five hundred? Or are we paying the forty-seven in what was there, you know?
Well, they'll come up with, based on what they feel is going to be the tonnage for the year, and we would pay that amount.
So if we're, if we're under, we don't get a credit? And if we're over, we don't get billed?
Correct.
Okay.
So whatever the number is, that's the number, not how much weight there is.
Correct.
So if we're under, they don't give us a credit? We still pay the same number? But on the flip side, if we're over, we still pay the same number?
What's nice about it is we know we're paying.
Right.
And it's a fixed budget number every year. The way they did it this year was based that the MSW, as it has in the past, with us paying the tipping fees, would fluctuate that bill. The service fee would be X amount of dollars plus the tonnage. And that tonnage would vary from month to month. So we really never know until the end of the year what the total cost is going to be. What we discussed with Johns already was that the bulk would not be part of, as I called, the base contract, the MSW, the recycling. Me, the town, would pay the tipping fees based on the bulk that's collected next week and with hopes that in the fall, it goes back to normal again. So that wouldn't be, there's no sense in paying for high bulk as we have this past year if it goes down and goes back to normal for the next five years. So I wanted to take that part out of what would be the base number. And then we could also calculate certainly based on what we paid this past year for bulk. And like I said, in the fall, hopefully go back to normal tonnage.
Michelle, did you say that you had the number of like what the average was over the past five years?
Yes.
Not, not including this past year?
Five, yes.
Do you have that number?
With me tonight?
Yeah.
No, but I can certainly get it.
So we know the average for the past five, how many tons per year?
Yeah.
That'd be a good number to have.
But don't forget recycling, when, when Johns had their all-in contract prior to these last two years, everything was just a number. Since we went with Mira and we paid the tipping fees, we have it broken down by what goes to Cherry Hill for bulk, what has gone to Johns for bulk, what has gone to Mira for recycling with no cost, and what MSW has gone to Mira.
So that's for the last two years. So that, that would be good, broken down to see, because that's kind of.
We have a spreadsheet for that.
Yeah, that's kind of a pre-COVID and COVID timeframe.
Correct, so that's why I said this current year, it was forty-four hundred tons of just MSW alone, which is your trash.
Right.
So we budgeted for this year forty-seven hundred tons. And free recycling goes away with Mira.
July first.
Of course, we're done with Mira, June thirty, if that works.
Right.
So Michelle, when they're, they're redoing their bids here, are they doing it like when they, are they doing it closed? We'll say going against each other or we?
They don't know what the other one's proposing.
Right.
They're going to give those numbers to Mike and I only.
Then it's a closed bid?
Yes. So they're, they don't know. We've met with Johns, we told them that we want numbers by tomorrow. We have a meeting with All American tomorrow via Zoom. Give us your best number, sharpen your pencil, and give us your all-in number. And like I said, to me, all-in is you get paid that, nothing, nothing more. And then we have a set budget number for the next five years.
Is there anything in the contractor in the, in the bid to, for the garbage tote? You know, the, the totes that, because if it changes company, we need to know that people that need, whether it's recycling or garbage totes, that they're available and they can get them.
Yes.
So replacements, new ones? So whatever, whoever gets it knows that they have to do that.
Correct. That's still in the budget, but that's still in the proposal.
Okay, and is that something the town has to pay for? Because I know we paid initially with Johns when they went to automated, you know, nine years ago.
Yeah. No, if a resident wants a second tote, they deal with Johns direct. Pay Johns direct. The town is not involved at all in second totes.
Okay, so like new construction, new totes, they get those for free, the first ones, correct?
One of each.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And are we going to have resolution on the clarification? I know you were asking about in terms of what the cost is going to be, no matter where it is going?
Right, that's part of.
Is that what it's going to, we're going to have all of that?
Yes.
We hope that's part of what's coming back there.
And yeah, they either All American, All American takes it to their facility, Berlin. If Johns wants to take it, it's Wallingford, that's fine. If John wants to take it to Shelton or Lisbon or any other place that they can take it, that will be their option, but it's going to be for X amount of dollars and that's it.
Right, it's not a fluctuating thing. Right. We, we need to make sure that we're comparing apples with apples.
Correct.
That's the biggest thing. Not two different ways, so.
So all-in's all-in and we don't care where they go?
Well, they have, I mean, they have their own facility, so.
But Johns can go, doesn't, we don't care where they go?
Again, right, we're just looking for apples to apples in terms of the methodology and, you know, the tipping fee and the price. So it's up to them to figure out what's going to be most efficient for them.
Okay. So if you can get that information for the next meeting and. Okay, next is public works. I know there were questions in regards to the arborist, which is in the budget. And thank you, Franny, for sending us the information about everything that an arborist would do and everything. And if you could just kind of highlight some of that stuff and like what the benefit is of an, of an arborist, that would be great.
Yeah, so, do you hear?
Well, we can, but the microphone is for Totucket TV.
Yeah, so an arborist, you know, we, we had an arborist before on staff that retired. And so this time around, you know, we're looking for an arborist. There's, there's a lot of tree laws and management stuff that we need to catch up on, to be honest with you. When you're an arborist, you know, we end up, we have our herb site license, which is something that's regulated by the state, so that reports that have to be done. And that also includes the school properties. We have the whole test, test management protocols we have to do. Vegetation management is another thing that an arborist is in charge of. The invasive species, that's a whole other program. That also ties into our plan for the town. There's, okay, it's in, give me a second, I'll think of that when I get back. But there's a whole base of, you know, what do we do with invasive plants? How do we treat them? And how are we disposing of it and controlling it? That's a huge thing. I know a long time we've been talking about the invasive, I call it, but, you know, that.
But not weed.
It's not weed, it's, you know, that's a huge problem that we have. There's also, we have to keep up to our own Connecticut laws. They'll be doing resident complaints, so that's, you know, someone calls about a tree, we have to look at it. We have to post them, we have to have hearings if, if there's a dispute about it. That would be part of that. Getting tree grants, the management of plant health and regulations. We have our parks, like North Farms Park. We have the parks behind TBS, that's Forest. We have all our land just in the center of town that we really haven't done much to.
Actually, when you mentioned the, the grants, so this person could oversee maybe applying for grants? And okay, so there could be a revenue opportunity there?
Yeah, and plus, plus he would be the assistant tree ward, and I'm the tree ward, but he'd be the assistant. So he would be going on seminars with Connecticut Tree Association, which is a lot of information. Replanting trees in town, we're supposed to have a plan for that, even though we take them down, but we're supposed to be putting some in. Also, being in charge of just the tree cleanup, you know, basically we have to treat most of the time, like I say, every single day, but we'd be using them for whatever. But for the most part, that's what he would be here for. Then that's a whole other thing, the safety for trees. We have to comply to certain laws. We have bucket rescue, we have to have on this, we have to do CPR training, we have to do electrical hazard training. But these are all the things that go on that most people don't realize. It's, it's a huge responsibility, especially the electric hazard. You know, we have to be trained to be able to work around the waters. trained to be able to work around the waters. You know, the person, you know, we're looking to cut back on some of the, I'm not gonna say we're getting rid of all the contractors, because that's probably gonna be virtually impossible, but I think it's getting better from where we were.
Well, and storms, if we have storms, I mean, that makes a difference, too.
Major storms, you're gonna have contracts, you just can't, you have to, just because the roads open up. But, and then you saw the requirements down there, you know, it's not just anybody off the street, there's just a lot of education that goes into this. So I think it would be a huge help for, and to keep up with all our regulations for what we can do.
How long, I mean, I know like the parks and the town properties and stuff, they're just due to all the other stuff, the complaints and all that stuff, those have kind of been put back to the back burner? Is that a safe thing to say?
Yeah, I mean, forest management's a huge thing, and that also falls underneath them also.
Okay.
So North Farms Park, and we do have a forestry that we work with, I've been working with, but this would just enhance that, because there are some, like in North Farms, there's some cutting that needs to be done there, you know. The stuff on our other properties near the farm, it's a little bit different, a lot of the tree clearers don't want that wood because it's a little bit too close to the road, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing it.
Right, okay.
We should be fining things out, and, so, it's a major.
Okay, a major plus to your-
Yeah, and especially with all the disease we have. And that's also, he'll be tracking, you know, all these diseases that are coming into the state, that's when you go to these tree associations, and they tell you what's going on with the maple trees, the white oaks, you know, so you can prepare or wait going forward. And not only that, but because of all this other work, we haven't done any lifting of trees on the road, we've done all, zero.
Lifting, meaning?
In the last, meaning lifting up to twelve, thirteen.
Oh, trimming now.
Trimming them up, you know. We've been just doing removals. And, you know, as you know, you've seen the numbers and the amount of wood that we've been grinding, it's just phenomenal. And that's because we had a little pandemic with trees.
So, Franny, so some of this stuff you listed, like spraying and vegetation and Connecticut laws, and, so is that what, so you cannot do that without an arborist? Is that what you're saying?
We don't have, so I don't have my supervisory license anymore, I gave it up because we had it.
Yeah.
So you have to have a supervisory license, and then you have to have applicator's license, which all has to be tracked.
Okay.
So this person, not only will have a supervisory license, but we would be doing, he'd be keeping track of what gets sprayed, if we spray it. And it's very tough in the schools now, and I'm sure Rose knows a lot about it, you know, you can't, basically, the younger kid, you can't do anything anymore in school about spraying, but there is guardrail spraying, right-of-way spraying, so there is stuff that needs to be done, but it's very tough. And all the new laws coming up, so it's like, you know, and continuing education is continually all year long, it's like anybody that has to do-
So does an arborist bring this to the table, or do you hire the arborist and then get, provide the training for, to be qualified for all this?
Well, some of his training has to be done.
Yeah.
You know.
Continually?
Oh, yeah, it's all, it's continually, everybody's gotta get points. Some of the stuff he can do, but he'll be in charge of that.
Okay.
Knowing that who's certified for electrical work, you know, working around electrical. You can have people that aren't certified still do tree work, but-
Right.
When you're around lawyers, anybody on the crew at that point has to know bucket rescue, because if anything ever happens, you know, you have to know what to do.
All right, thanks.
Does an arborist have to get recertified all the time?
All the time. You have to go for continuing education points all year, you have to get some money a year.
Right now, we're paying for all of this, we're under contract already.
We were, we have been, in the last year, because the one that was doing it was retired. But, yes.
So Franny, it sounds like not only do we need the arborist, it sounds like we probably should have had the arborist the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Being that we're not trimming, we haven't been trimming the trees or anything?
No, because we've been doing all the other tree work.
Right.
And that's the other thing, you're gonna have a guy that's, you know, basically is gonna be cutting trees most of the time. Now, we just take the highway crew and we go out and do what we can, and then we get busy, we have our contractors, we get overwhelmed, but we still have three contractors almost every week, so.
Sounds similar to definitely you.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's in the budget. I'm definitely not, I don't think any of us were proposing to cut it, they just wanted more information, is basically what I've heard from people. So we appreciate you giving us more detail.
Thanks, Franny.
Yep, thanks, Franny.
The other thing in Public Works, just, I don't necessarily want to take action on this tonight, just because there's just six of us here, and I think it would be better if we had a full council, is I know you have been asking about a superintendent for the last number of years. And the more that we have talked about it, we really need to start planning for succession. Franny's not gonna be here forever, as much as we want him to be. I think at some point in time, Franny will want to retire. And we just, the superintendent is like right under Franny, Franny would have an opportunity to train this person, and it gives us, the town, an opportunity to look at that person and see, would they be qualified to step into those shoes at some point in time? And we get to know that person a little bit better. So we are thinking of putting this position into the budget and starting mid-year in January. I know you did not ask for it because you asked for the arborist, but this has become important to a lot of us, to start thinking down the road and planning for down the road. But personally, I would like to wait on it until everyone is here, and since we're not finalizing the budget tonight. But I just wanted to let you know and everyone else know that that is what we are thinking. That was one of the questions we did ask Anthony, and he gave us numbers of what it would be to add the superintendent for a half year, starting in January, so.
Just remember, those numbers were based on last year's budget request, so Mr. Morales could probably update those to more accurate numbers as far as the pay goes, assuming last year's numbers.
Yeah, I mean, you can share those with Franny, and if he thinks they have to be adjusted at all.
Yeah, even the arborists, we haven't settled, the arborist is a business union, the superintendent is non-union.
Right.
So the numbers for even the arborists are, they're very close, but we haven't finalized, we couldn't finalize it until we did.
Yeah, but if, I mean, if it's a few thousand dollars here or there, I mean, that's kind of what contingency is for, as long as my feeling is if we have the bulk of it in the budget, and if there's some minor adjustments that need to be made, plus or minus, we can take care of that.
Yeah.
The next item that I have-
Are you in Public Works?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So there are a couple things that to think about. One is the farm. I really, I really think, the farm is gonna start needing work, over at Hager Farm, the barn, we had two bar, uh, three buildings there. We did the farmhouse last year, we painted it, and did a new roof, looks 100% better. And there is some work that has to be done on the land. I, I would think that we would try to at least take some of the rent, and I don't even know what it is anymore, because pieces have been taken away from the farmer, so we have to look, really look back and see what we're getting for rent. But I think some of that money should go back into the property there.
Okay.
Because we really need to paint the barns, or they're gonna start. You know, we're actually gonna be knocking one down pretty soon, because it's falling down, you'll probably see people buy it, but there's always a little stretch there.
Are we talking about the property next to the Public Works?
Yeah.
The popo, you know, where the-
Next, where the house is.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. So, you know, it's gonna need a coat of paint, you know, renting a roof on one of the buildings one of these days, so I think if we give a little of a fund for it, and then at least we have the money to fix it.
So can you get us, unless you know tonight, Anthony, how much we collect on rent, or for the next meeting?
I'll check while you guys are talking.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, and I, and actually, you know, we have that account, that maintenance account in the capital.
Yes.
Even if we had a sub-account in there, that it's, that that money is for, you know, to be used on that property, just so that it stays there from year to year and doesn't go back into the general fund, and we put money in there from the lease, then, since you're taking care of the other account, the maintenance account, you can see-
We approved that yet.
Pardon me?
We didn't approve all that yet, did we? The other maintenance account.
What, as far as you taking care of it?
Yeah.
I thought we did, but if we need a motion, we can, I thought we took care of that at a council meeting.
No, it's like next agenda, it was told to be brought back, but not next, we'll do the next agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah, so again, I don't know what the lease is at this point.
Right, so we'll just, we'll get that information, and we'll just take care of all of that, so that since you're kind of managing that and the funding, this way you know how much is there, and you know what has to be done on those buildings, and we have money to do it, or at least to start it. Okay, thank you.
In January, we took in $4,600 for the Hager property rental, and March, we took in $700 for this White Oak property rental.
Yeah, I don't know.
Was it monthly?
No, it's monthly.
Yes, for a year.
Oh.
Not much.
Now, all we knew it wasn't much, so that's for the-
It's all yours.
So that's for the whole year?
Yeah.
So somebody's living in a house?
No, no, it's just, it's the land that the farmer, the farmland that they rent.
Spend widely.
It's really for the growing season.
Yeah, fifty, it's fifty-three hundred dollars. Okay, it's okay, we'll take care of that.
One last thing, the driveway, BPW driveway.
Oh, yeah.
Did you wanna know that?
Um, well, we're going to need to know the number, because it's not budgeted, and it has to be done, and it's part of the police department project. So I can tell by this that it's probably along the lines of NBIS, that we don't wanna know, but we have to do it. No, not that bad, it's just that it's a high number, we don't wanna know it, but it has to be done.
Might as well give us a hint.
Well, unfortunately, Engineer couldn't give me his number yet, but we, I worked up a number, so I think this is a high number, but it's like 250,000.
Oh, that's not as bad as what I thought.
So that's like, so we use the material from, you know, it's like, now, I may have to do some of the work, and I could probably have to pave and gun and stuff, but, you know, it's using the material from across the street, then building-
But this is not, this does not include the drainage.
The drain, I added 70,000 for drainage.
So it does.
Oh, so it's drainage and driveway?
Yeah.
And that's not budgeted in the project, correct?
No, it's not.
Okay. And so could that be part of bonding if we wanted to, Anthony?
Certainly, it's a project expense, you wanted to incur it if you didn't have the project, so it definitely is a project expense.
Okay.
And there's no issue as far as the state, as far as reimbursement, like the school project, it's all our money anyway, so wherever you want to borrow, we borrow.
And I'll confirm, I will confirm the number.
Okay, all right, thanks, Franny. Okay, now on to community center. This is account 4,401. Okay, so we had discussion previously with the council in regards to, especially after Park and Rec did their budget workshop with us, about the salary for the director and the rec supervisor. The commission had recommended pay increases for both of them, and they were cut at the manager level, but we would like to institute pay raises. So I would like to make a motion for account 4,401, 101, for the salary increase for the director, to increase that by $3,500.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is there a second? Oh, there was a second, sorry. Why did it increase at $500, Rose?
Right, well, from my little talking point sheet, it's an increase of $500 from on there. Their original increase was 5,000 for the director and 8,000 for the rec supervisor.
Okay, I got it.
But then they did some other things in the budget for the director in her travel
Any other discussion?
Completely agree. Do you want to do?
Yeah. Michelle?
Present. Wollongabeer?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, the next one is also to line 4,401-101, and it's a salary increase for the rec supervisor, and I would like to make a motion to increase that by 7,500.
I'll second that.
And part of this is that during this past year, the rec department, along with other departments, that really had to change the way they service the community and everything, and the rec department did an absolutely phenomenal job in retooling very quickly on a number of their events. And also part of this is, especially on the rec supervisor, is currently the rec supervisor and the secretary are basically making the same amount of money. And the rec supervisor has really done a tremendous job, and between Carrie and Jesse, they are a very good team, along with Kathy Poston for the seniors, and they have done a remarkable job, and I just think they need to be compensated, and this was part of the reason that the rec commission made the recommendations that they did. So this kind of correlates to the whole thing also.
Totally agree. As a parent, what was, could have been a really unbearable year, was a very positive experience living in this town for those reasons. And I came from a town before that had nothing, but this was, it really was amazing what they did and pulled together on.
Michelle?
Wollongabeer?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so Anthony?
183145.
Thank you. So the next motion is for line 4,401-120, which is pension and social security for the two increases we just did, and I'd like to make a motion to increase that by 1,0083145.
I'll second that.
Could you repeat that, the amount, please?
183145.
Wollongabeer?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next one is line 4,401-203, cleaning supplies. And I just have a question. So in looking at last year's budget, I believe your budget was like 1,082 for cleaning supplies, and now this year it's 1,150, it's not much of an increase, but yet we just approved an additional part-time custodian because of the, what you need in order to open and everything else. So is 1,150 enough in cleaning supplies to accommodate all of that? Because basically, it's the same as last year's budget, but you're gonna have two custodians now and have to do more cleaning, I assume, to meet the regulations.
So to answer your question, yes, we want to, the decision would be approved when we were putting together the budget, so an increase would be helpful. For example, our sanitation wipes cost twenty eight dollars and forty nine cents a bucket right now, which if we went through a five hundred count bucket a week would be about one thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars in additional expenses based on the sanitizing of the gym. That wasn't factored in unfortunately because the fitness center has not been open this year. We were trying to be conservative and seeing if we can cut things and really trying to present you with a, a budget that that line would assist.
So, so what would be a number that you're looking at for an increase? I mean, that's fifteen hundred dollars right there, so is that enough or two thousand?
Two thousand would be.
An increase?
I could see covering all of the additional cleaning expenses, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to increase line forty four oh one, point two oh three, cleaning supplies by two thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Okay, next item is line forty four oh one, two oh nine, which is gas for the senior vans. So in looking at your budget, there's four thousand gallons budgeted at a price of a dollar sixty-nine. I don't know where you can buy gas for a dollar sixty-nine, and in looking at other departments in the budget, they're at two nineteen, so that's a fifty cent increase. Now, I don't know if you have separate pumps at Public Works that you get cheaper gas than the other departments, but it just seems out of whack. So I would like to make a motion to increase line forty four oh one, two oh nine by two thousand dollars, which would put it at the police department's budget of two nineteen a gallon, which is fifty cents more in your budget, so that's where the two thousand dollars comes from, four thousand gallons at fifty cents. So my motion is to increase that gas for the senior.
What was the price per gallon, Rose?
A dollar sixty-nine. Two nineteen in the budget. Yeah, I, I looked, I, I saw your department was a little bit, that's why I didn't know if you had separate pumps at, do they fill up at Public Works?
Oh, of course.
Oh, well, I didn't know if there's, you know, Park and Rec and.
No.
Police, fire, pub, Public Works, all separate pumps, I don't.
I'll second that.
Right, we're locked in, we're dollars sixty-nine until the end of this calendar year.
Oh.
And the other one goes down at the time.
No, 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 that's, it's okay. They still use the senior vans because they've still taken them for appointments and stuff.
Got it, so it's still where it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Okay, the next one is line forty four oh one, three oh one, telephone. So last year in the budget, because we went to a new phone system and they put everything under central services for the phones, the only department that was charged in, in the budget book last year was Park and Rec, and we made this same motion to take out the line charge and I think fax is what, what is this, three oh one?
There's gonna be a motion at your next meeting to move the money back to the department.
To move it?
Add essential services back to the exterior buildings that we thought were gonna build one bill, but we got separate bills, community center, library, Public Works. The building originally intended to be one bill, we left, and then when the bills came in, they were able to break it up by building, so we're gonna reallocate the budget. We can't do it till the two departments till April, so on your meeting next week, it'll be transferred, move that money back.
Okay, so don't do this motion is what you're saying?
Correct.
Even though we did it last year, it didn't work the way you thought it was gonna work?
Since the central thing, we're getting one, one bill that can itemize, but the bills came in by location, so we're able to charge them directly to, to the appropriate buildings.
So are you gonna take what's in the budget under central services and divide that up back to the budgets?
To the last, I'll say, to the buildings that are outside, like the special, the community center, Lauren Davis, all the exterior buildings, we'll get their money back in their budget. We've been charging their accounts throughout the year. But the question's been within essential services, because that's what we thought the mentality was gonna be last year, only to find out that they could actually bill us independently, separate buildings, so we're, we're charging it that way.
Okay, so we'll just leave that one alone then and not do anything since you're gonna adjust it anyway. And then line item forty four oh one, three oh seven, miscellaneous mileage for other rec employees. So I noticed this was an increase over last year, is that for the park monitor?
No. Part of it.
Because it says park monitor, or, or, well, no, it says other employees.
Yeah, so that was for the park monitor, and if you look at the manager's proposed cuts, that, that was, he, he proposed cutting that out because we are gonna be able to give him a town vehicle to, to drive around and monitor the parks, but the increase that you see was due to the accurate mileage that you have to drive.
Okay, there's no, there's no notation in our budget book.
Yeah, I apologize.
What was cut, of what was cut?
Yeah.
On, on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we will not have to do that either. So as liaison to Park and Rec, I just saw an email that there is a special meeting tomorrow night because there's an opportunity to buy a van?
Yes.
Is that what I understand?
Yes.
You wanna just, I know, which is not in your budget?
No.
But there's no provisions for next year's budget to account for anything that this, you know, man might need.
Correct, so the opportunity presented itself through the state bid?
State surplus.
Thank you. For a vehicle, it's a two thousand thirteen, eight passenger van, so it's smaller than what we typically use, but we would be able to utilize it for additional senior transportation as well as recreation transportation. It's available for seven thousand one hundred and five dollars to about seven thousand four hundred and fifty out the door. We did have the Public Works mechanic go up and inspect it to make sure that we've done our due diligence. That having been said, we can't guarantee that there's nothing wrong with it, but we, we've at least gone up, checked it out and inspected it, so we would like to look at acquiring that vehicle before it goes to public auction, so.
So you would use this year's funds to purchase it because you obviously have a surplus in your budget?
Correct, yeah.
So that's where the money is coming from?
Yeah, so we would like to look to, to fill it from the, from that opportunity, yes.
Okay, and do you anticipate normal maintenance on the vehicle, nothing out of the ordinary?
Correct.
Can be absorbed in your budget for next year?
I believe so.
That's presented?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so the, the gas account, what we just did will take care of gas and all that stuff?
I believe so, it'll just make things a little bit easier for us to get out to seniors and things like that and, and have more than one vehicle on the road at the same time, which sometimes is often an issue. And with COVID, we're restricted to the number of people, so currently we're only driving three people in a vehicle, so we're driving less because we're going to less places, but having an additional vehicle will allow us to get more of them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, an eight passenger vehicle, you do not need a CDL driver?
You do not, correct, so I could go out and pick up people if we get in a bind and we need to go get somebody, which happens, so.
Okay, so that's an advantage?
Yeah, absolutely.
Also for you on there?
A, a huge advantage, correct.
Because I know how difficult it is to get CDL drivers.
Yes, yes, it is.
So.
Yes, and there's only thirty thousand miles on the vehicle, so I should clarify that it's a very, very low mileage vehicle, and it was the best of the four that were being offered.
Perfect, great.
I thought state surplus was fifty dollars for him.
So wouldn't, wouldn't there be some increases in some other lines, like maintenance and insurance and?
Well, the, the maintenance, that's what I just asked, she said that they feel they can absorb it in their, what is presented to us and not add anything to their existing budget. Insurance would, there would probably be an increase, but we might have, if we get rid of vehicles, then we could have some taken off, so that's all part of the insurance package on the thing. But yes, there would be additional. Oh, and the, the other thing, since we're on Park and Rec, and is, I know that we are having the fence done, which is in the current year's budget, the fence at North Farms Park, but it looks like we might have hit a snag there because it looks like nothing's been done for a while.
Yeah, so the project was awarded at the end of October, but it was delayed due to inclement weather and according to the contractor that we hired, a nationwide shortage in the type of fabric that we requested. Some additional concerns have come up regarding the material since the project has started, so Fred and I have been out at the site, kind of monitoring the progress and seeing what's being done, and we had some additional concerns, so we did get the town attorney involved and we're requesting no further delays by the contractor. At this time, the contractor is saying though that it'll be an additional five weeks until the material or fabric we requested comes in. So we'll be meeting with the town attorney on Thursday to evaluate our thoughts on that and whether it's worth continuing with this particular contractor or switching to another contractor, which could also still delay the project five to six weeks because of a new contractor coming in and ordering materials, so we're evaluating the situation and trying to get the situation rectified as quickly as possible.
Because this, was this supposed to be back online for spring, correct?
That was the goal, yes.
Wasn't there like so many days that they had to complete the project once it started?
Correct, so it was technically supposed to be sixty days from the awarded date, so if you looked, it was awarded back in October, so yes, this has been an issue. Due to the weather, we kind of delayed it for part of, but he was supposed to start as soon as the weather broke, which was March eighth, he began the project, so it should be wrapping up.
Okay.
In the allotted time.
Okay.
So are you getting new material?
Yes.
Material that's no good that was there?
No.
Was it the wrong material?
What?
Was it the wrong material?
The, the, that the contractor put out there? Some of it was not to our standards, yes. So we, we've been monitoring the, the size of the piping as well as the type of the mesh or fabric that's going on because we went with a higher grade mesh to ensure that we didn't have the damage that we saw reoccurring on that fence. So we're, we're trying to make sure that all of the correct materials that were spec'd in the bid are actually what the contractor's putting in so that we don't have to go back and redo anything or, and we're catching it right now, is pretty much what we're.
So the poles in the mesh aren't the right material?
No.
So pretty much everything that's up there is coming down?
Not everything, there are a few poles that are the right material and there are a few poles that are not the right material, so we are working to rectify that and, like I said, we, we put him on notice that he is in violation of what was spec'd in the contract.
So we're able to manage the issue?
Yes, we are fully on top of the issue and, and monitoring daily, going down and checking on the work that's being done to make sure that it is exactly what's spec'd in the bid.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item I have is under EDC, forty six seventy-three. So there's fifty five hundred dollars in there for a marketing communications program, which is a new initiative, and just wondering exactly what this is, if we could have more information?
One, one, one.
Because we've had, you know, several things that we've implemented and paid for and then they go away and then, you know, there's no benefit from it, so just wanted more information prior to approving this on here. So I see this is here.
Yeah.
Good evening, Elizabeth Kaplan, Chair of Economic Development, thank you. And so as Rose said, I, I completely understand what she said regarding other programs that we had in the past. Two, three years ago, we were part of a program out of New Haven called REC Development, which is essentially the New Haven Economic Development Commission, if you will, and we partnered with them for a few years in the hopes, and this is prior to Roger being employed here as our coordinator, we partnered with them as a group of volunteers to try to get some business marketing for our town, and we were hopeful that they could aid us in that process. And although they did work with us, their focus really is mainly on New Haven and we really did not draw any benefit, and then I believe it was two years ago that we decided not to renew our membership with them, which was a bid over five thousand dollars. And then, you know, Roger came aboard in the meantime and he has networked tirelessly within the community and, and working with businesses and with Carrie as well when she was here. And we talked about how we could really reach local business and create North Branford as we've done with the Sunflower Project and we have the, the wineries open now and, and we have, you know, stewards of the land, how do we become a destination? And we have been working with, who was a volunteer in the Sunflower Project, her name is Lauren Lee DeBolt, and she has come up with a concept to help local business, basically someone coming into the town, she has made a QR code, are you all familiar with a, what a QR code is? And if you're not, I'd be happy to explain it.
Could you?
Sure. So if you, you could go online or you can go somewhere and it looks like, it's usually about this size and it looks like, almost like.
Basically the menus you go to at restaurants, you have to take a picture of it.
Yeah, so this is what a QR code is, so if you have an updated cellphone, you basically just point at it and the information pops up on your cellphone, so yes, menus are a, a perfect example. Now with COVID, they don't want people touching things. So she has developed this project for these window clings to go into local businesses. And what would happen is, or it could be on someone's vehicle, for example, anyone can have one of these window clings. This is just part of the program.
What is it, a window?
Window cling, you know, it's like.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, it's a, it's a QR code and it is, and it would be related to North Branford, so I sent her a picture of, I have a million sunflower pictures, so I sent her some sunflower pictures and that's gonna be our window cling, if you will, for North Branford, so it'll be special for our town. And so anyone coming into town, anyone in town, could go to a local business, put their phone, town hall even, or the libraries, and put their phone to this window cling, this QR code, and events that are going on in town, it could be a town event, it could be a business special, it could be a, a high school event, it could be anything that is going on in town that would pop up on this window cling, so someone coming into town getting gas and they choose to point and shoot, basically, can find out what's going on in North Branford. So it's a really incredibly cool concept. And so we feel that this would really help enhance the businesses in town. We really tried to make inroads to communicating with our businesses as Roger has done, and we want them to see what the EDC is trying to help them and, and promote their business in the community, events in the community, we work with Park and Rec, you know, whoever, whatever. And so that's what this program is all about. And Lauren is essentially developed this program from scratch, and she's done a lot of research on it. It's not being done anywhere else where in, I don't even know about the country, but certainly not in this vicinity. For example, you go to Guilford and they have a kiosk there, and if you want information about Guilford, you have to stop at the kiosk, and I don't know if it's manned, it was at one point, and you can go in and someone can tell you about events going on in Guilford. This sort of takes all of that out of the equation, it's a really simple way to engage the public about our community. So we're essentially trading what we spent on REC a few years ago with something that is intrinsic to North Branford only. And anyone in the community, coming into the community, it could be put in a newspaper, you know, like the Sound, that kind of thing, and Lauren runs the program and businesses, what would happen is, so a business might buy a window cling for five dollars, put it in there, and then they can choose to advertise daily, they can. They can, you know, weekly. So we feel it's a huge investment for the businesses in our community. And it's really going to help us put things on the map. You know, we have Destination North Branford. That's another website that we have, and this is called Local is Good. So we feel this is, this is something that could really help our community dramatically. And I don't know if you have any questions about it, but it is totally local for North Branford only.
So this is a startup program, obviously?
Correct, absolutely.
So she obviously gave us a good, because if it's not around anyplace else, we're kind of the trial.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so she gave us a very discounted price.
Oh, yes, this is not, this is essentially that the money that has been budgeted for us is all going into the operation of this, really no salary, nothing really for her per se. It's all about startup costs. And buying the window clings, any advertising costs, you know, any paper printing, any of that. So it is really no, nothing's, essentially, nothing's going into her pocket.
Is that ready to go on July 1st?
It will be ready to go, yes. I don't know if any of you went to the meeting yesterday, but I know Lauren presented there at the quarterly business.
That was this morning.
Was it this morning? Today, what's today?
It was this morning.
I'm sorry, I've lost track of all days.
I know, it's spring break.
No, I have tennis every day, so that's where my focus is right now.
Can I add, Lauren's just done an amazing job with the Destination North Branford website. And it just makes, I know one of my questions was related to our town website. And I would really love to be able to see that, like, all incorporated. Like even, I know you were talking about a refresh for the site. Is there a way to just make that branding that Lauren created be a central hub, not just for, like, for economic development, everything? I just thought the design was really well. And to be able to, like, have that central communications for everything in town. If, as opposed to having, like, silos of communication, like a one-stop-shop communications hub for our town would be really nice. And I don't, I'm just putting that out there. I know that there's plans to refresh. And I would just love to see what Lauren has done bleed into our other communication outlets.
To what Tara's speaking to, if you go to the Destination North Branford website, that is the economic development hub, as she said. And that was all done gratis. That was all her own volunteer work for the last three years.
People pay a lot of money for that.
Yes, since the Sunflower Project started. So, you know, that's the kind of investment she has in our community. She absolutely loves our community. And she spent many hours researching. And she is a marketing person. That's what she does in her profession. So she spent a long time researching, how could I benefit this community? And so the first step was the Destination North Branford website. And now this is taking it to our businesses. And it's, we believe as an EDC is a very worthwhile investment. Because we invested in REX, it didn't work out because we thought with New Haven, that would give us greater exposure. And we feel this will give us exposure. I mean, we're getting more and more exposure between Sunflower Project and, you know, the Destination North Branford video is, has been seen by many people. So we're, we're asking for your confidence in us to take it, take this step, this next step.
Okay.
No, we appreciate it. Yeah, and please, anytime, you know, you're always welcome at an EDC meeting. We're online, you know, still at this point. But anytime you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thanks, Liz. Okay, the next item I have is contingency. So there's a huge increase in the reserve for contingency, like by $246,000. What is driving that increase? Just, I mean, this, this year we're at like 191, and it's projected that we'll end up around 175. And, and next year, we're up to 438 in the budget. It just seems.
The 175 is the base amount we use every year.
Okay.
And then there's the 263, which is the wage increases contingency for the admin clerical library and police.
$263,000.
How many administrators does that cover?
Administrators, clerical, library, and police. Everybody but public works.
Fran, don't you feel cheated?
Okay, well, I guess it was just, I was just a little confused when you said that there was 2.5% in the budget. I thought it was in the accounts, whatever.
Is it because those numbers aren't set yet? Is that why it's contingent?
Yeah, I'm starting negotiations yet.
Okay.
So it's a placeholder. It's a contingency, but there's no guarantees to go anybody's department.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
We'll put out when the contracts are settled.
Okay. Okay, that's all that I have under general government services. I don't know if anyone has anything else, but those were the areas that I saw.
Does anyone have anything else on that?
Two questions. We have talked in the past about the human resource model of splitting. And there's, there's no money anywhere to date.
Right.
And then secondly, do you think we're ever going to get back into the counseling business? Because I carried this department forever, and we haven't had counseling for the better part of 10 years. And I just want to kill that department going forward. Human Relations Department?
What number is it?
4503. That was what we set up when we did the counseling in the building behind the old town hall. We had Tracy and Maria, I believe her name was. And we haven't had it for probably close to 10 years.
Oh, it's not even a tab in here?
Right, because I'm not printing it up. I carry the department name on there, and I'm, it's kind of a, if we're, are we going to get back into that business? Do we ever see that, taking back into that business?
95, page 95.
Counseling?
Page 95.
You haven't done anything in 10 years?
No. We contracted it out with a company, they were in the building behind the old town hall. Until, it was something we didn't really want to get involved with. And there was some savings, and it kind of evaporated, getting more of a hassle. So we just kind of got out of the whole, whole business. We carried this department on our books that we haven't used in about 10 years. And I'm just curious, do you think we're ever going to get back into that business? Or try to delete it off our chart of accounts?
It's all zeros.
It is. We have a couple of, we have land preservation too. We carry that.
It's all volunteers.
We have land preservation. We haven't bought a piece of land probably, I can't say how long. Yeah, we carry this department on our books. And it's just trying to clean things up. Especially we're looking to move to the new software. I want to eliminate any kind of things that we're not using on a regular basis. And I wanted to find you about the human resources.
Right.
We've got to put some money somewhere for that. I was wondering where you wanted to push that? Would that be in council budget, manager budget? What were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to come up next week in our discussion. I, because I didn't, I saw under technology, you have a line item for, you know, like IT. There was $10,000 in there for, I'm assuming that that's support wherever we may need support from.
Yep.
Which triggered the HR in my mind. So, and I didn't see anything in there, but I didn't know exactly what department to look in. But I went through, I went through all of them, and I didn't see the HR piece in there. But I think that's a discussion for the whole council to have, because I know we had brought that up. And, but I, I do think something has to go into the budget.
Right.
My suggestion on the other accounts is if you can get a list of accounts we haven't used, if, if you want to make some changes, like, and just present that at another council meeting to, to delete them, because it's not necessarily a budget item right now.
No, no.
So, but we can definitely clean up for you.
Excellent, thank you.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
So, so there's no, I mean, if we remove a, an account, that doesn't necessarily mean the next budget year, you can't add an account, right?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. It just, it takes up two pages, printing pages of that book that are totally useless.
Yep, I get it.
Two pages there, and two pages on land preservation. So it's four pages times, you know, under printing and everything else. It's like, we're just wasting money.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So if I needed counseling, there's nothing there anyway, right?
You can talk to Lisa. Lisa fills it.
We'll give you an empty page, Walt.
You could doodle on it.
Yeah, you could take the page and doodle. Okay, so are we done with general government services?
Yes, I'm sorry. All right, capital improvement plan.
Okay, so there's not a lot on capital improvement plan, but I do have some questions. Under town hall, so under the software upgrade, I know we have 144,000 from last year budgeted.
Correct.
And this year, we have 260,000. So are we saying it's $400,000 the first year? But.
That's if, that's if we went with the separate databases.
But didn't the superintendent say he was paying for something on that?
Right, that's, well, before that conversation came up.
Okay.
If, if you want to net it down to just our piece, it's about 153,000, I believe. Maybe make it 160,000 after time, correct your training time? So bring the 260 down to 160.
So we could cut 100,000 off of that?
Yeah. It's not 91,388, but if you want to cut 100,000, that's round number, or turn it into 95, whatever.
100, sounds good. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to decrease the software under budget funds by $100,000.
I'll second that.
I just have one, one question. Anthony, you made, you just commented about two databases.
Yeah.
Could you just, what, what did you mean by that?
Well, that was, that was the whole fork in the road where we were at. We decided to go with the Munis product. The theory was, do we have two separate databases, two separate installations, basically? Or do we have one shared database? And my comment at the last meeting to you folks was, what's the end game? If you're, if we keep talking about this joint finance department, they only go down the road of one. It's not going to happen in our lifetime. Are we going to build a new town hall big enough to accommodate everybody in our lifetime? Probably not. So then it became a money issue. Then it became the $120,000 delta over five years, saying, why would you go with the two when you can go with one and save 120,000? And then as, as Rose, then Scott stepped up and said, I'll eat 120 over five years. And then it became, okay, well, for less aggravation and, you know, there would be some scheduling conflicts if we had one database. We couldn't do checks at the same time, we couldn't do this at the same time. So this eliminates all, all that hassle. We'll live in, in a similar software product, a medical software product. We can talk to each other, we can backfill each other if need be, help each other with questions, and do once a year kind of thing. So it's accomplishing some of the tasks that the study showed out that we should be going down that path for. But it's going to, it's going to be two separate databases, two separate installations, basically, on the same software. That seems to be where we're headed, just for the sake of simplicity and get the ball rolling. So the incremental cost, the shared database first year would have been 297,302. With a separate database, it's 388,690 in year one. So that's where you can take that 100,000 off.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Upstand.
The second item under town hall is I'd like to make a motion to eliminate, to decrease by $100,000 the generator at town hall. This was discussed at previous council meeting as not necessary due to the new EOC at the police station.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Upstand.
Okay. Now, under culture and recreation, so we have the library painting. This was discussed at the library budget workshop. And the council was, felt very strongly about getting both of these libraries painted. Doing a complete paint job. And then from there, we can do the maintenance going forward and do it, you know, Franny's managing that account. And, you know, if we need a room painted, we do it and not wait until we have to paint the whole library. So one of the things that we had discussed was, will there be money left over in, I don't care whose account, on the, on the town side, from any department? So that we can do Smith Library this year, in this budget year, which is right now budgeted at $28,750.
You've got about 40,000 left in that pot currently from this, this year's application. And it's not a reference to get it next year, as far as, I don't know, recurring $50,000 every year appropriation?
Just wait, we're getting, we haven't gotten to that yet.
So you can take, you can take one of those two out of the 40 remaining you have in the current year's application if you wanted to.
Yeah, I would prefer to, instead of putting money back into the general fund, based on what's left at the end of the year from a variety of different account, departments, I would like to see us take it from that rather than deplete the 50,000 account on there.
Add it to the budget fund column now, you're saying? Or you want to take it out of current year's money?
I want to take it out, my proposal is to take it out of current year's money on there. Because I'm sure with departments not being fully opened and things not spending all the money, I'm sure there is money throughout the budget to come up with $28,750. So if you can look between now and next week and give us some indication as to whether that is possible, that would be great.
You said 20,000 or 28,000?
28,750.
28, thank you.
But I would like to make a motion to allocate $37,500 for painting for Atwater Library for fiscal year '21, '22.
I'll second that.
And basically, my thinking is we're taking that money from the generator money that we just.
Budget fund column?
Budget fund column, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Upstand.
And then for the maintenance account, that's under, that we established last year, the $50,000. So we did ask for an accounting of that, which we got. And I know some of these expenses were, you know, per the lease for the three fire companies. We've heard about the, the lock at the recycling building, which is fine. But what's the tri-state generator maintenance?
The emergency generators that are around town during the budget process, some of the departments came in, so they hadn't budgeted money for generator maintenance. So discussion pursued, okay, we have this maintenance pot of money. Let's call that maintenance of the generators.
That's not what this, that's, that's not the intention that this, that this money was for, that the council had talked about. I mean, it was taken out of there now.
But we'll fix it. The deadline is going to change.
I know, but if that's, to us, that's not maintenance of a building. That should be built into your budget. It's an annual contract, you know, there's contractual, other contractual in every department's budget.
Correct.
That's where that should go. This pot of money is. That's where that should go. This pot of money is for maintenance on town hall-owned buildings, so that we can maintain them.
Upkeep them properly.
Yeah, and maintenance contracts, I feel in most of the council, when we talked about it, felt that that is not, that's not what this account is for. So moving forward, just so that everyone...
I can move that one now, I'll move tomorrow.
But, so in saying that, I would like to make a motion to increase the maintenance, to add to the maintenance account twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from budget funds, in budget funds, for the twenty-one, twenty-two years. And that should bring that account whole, plus a little bit more in there.
I'll second that.
Twelve-five, Ruth?
Pardon me?
Twelve-five?
Twelve-five, right. So basically, the hundred thousand from the generator, we're going to take fifty thousand back between these two projects.
Any other discussion?
I agree with that, absolutely.
Michelle?
Call a favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain.
And the last one is just under education, and this came up in the budget workshop with the Board of Ed. The TBS playground project for eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars is under, I think, LOSEF. It's under a state grant fund, so it's not going to affect the mill rate at all. But that project was able to be done in this fiscal year, so I'm just correcting the budget. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease the TBS playground project under education by eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll second that. Call a favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain.
And so this was under, whether it was LOSEF or MUNI or whatever. I don't know if there's anything else in our budget that we could allocate money to using some of this money, or you just, do you just roll it forward? How does that work?
If the way it works is anything, to get three hundred and one thousand dollars a year, anything that you don't use or assign to a specific project is considered Town Aid Road, and it goes to the White Man View.
Okay, that works for me.
For the next one.
Okay. That's all that I have under capital.
All right, debt service.
Debt service, there is a cushion built in there of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Otherwise, it'd be a reduction in debt service. And again, we're just trying to gear up for that inevitable increase that's coming with these projects. So there's a, you'll see that the debt service basically is level funded year over year, three seven five oh, four ninety-nine, three seven five oh, six nineteen. So it affects it since the level funding, which is what your goal of debt service is supposed to be, or as close as possible. So within a hundred and twenty dollars, I think that's pretty reasonable. So the hundred and ninety-five thousand will go into a reserve fund. We did that a couple of years back, if you recall. Again, we're just trying to mitigate that. There are the room that we know is coming as soon as these projects start hitting. So if we can have a little bit of money, natural desire to help the debt service, the general fund at that point when those big payments come in. We did have a conversation with Martin Chapman, who said he was going to tell financial Mark by the next, so everybody knows. Looking at going out in August, because we do have, the two thousand and fifteen bonds are eligible for refinancing. We have a little bit of money we could refinance, and that would be in August. So rather than go out in May, as we have previously talked about, and then back out in August, again, to minimize the issuance costs, we're going to hold off and do everything in August. And we looked at the amount of money looking at between the high school project between now and next August, and the police station now and next August, for about forty, around forty million dollars. And I had mentioned to Mark also that even though it's not in the CIP currently, we need to know and put in the CIP the NBIS issue, as well as the St. McQuillan's issue, so we can have some money there in an adopted CIP, so that if we get all these ducks in a row, when we do this bonding in August, we can get that money in the next school year, when the schools are out in summer of twenty-two, we have the money to do the roof project at High City Middle School and at Jesse's place. So you're talking probably, again, I don't know, I know the number we looked at the other day was about four and a half to do the middle school, the fix that Rusty had kind of talked about, and I know, and that wasn't, again, the pitch roof idea, and same on Jesse's roof. We had the rough number of a million dollars to do her flat roof idea, but not another pitch roof idea. So I'm not sure, have we finalized flat roof versus pitch roof? Have we gone down that path yet, or are we firm on that yet, or are we still...
Well, I don't think we're firm, because the way that we usually would put out the bids on that is to do an ad alternate for a pitched, to see once what, I mean, that's how we did it with TDES, to see once what the cost difference was, and then decide and whether, I know, we talked to Franny about pitched at STW, and, you know, we're not so sure that it can have, first of all, structurally, that it can hold a pitched roof. And then can the, you know, it's unlikely that the whole building can be pitched. The same as TBS, the whole building could not be pitched either. So that would all be stuff that would come out during the bid process on there, and it's tough to know it. This, I would have no idea what that would be, but I would definitely like, you know, to look at that as an option. And if Rusty's talking a new roof on NBIS, it would be the time to look at that also. So...
So I just think that we need that, we need to get a number into the CIP, even if it's a very ballpark number, as we finalize the CIP now. Because in August, and August comes around, we'll go out and hit the market. So we have something concrete saying, okay, the council authorized...
Text number of dollars.
Text number of dollars, and then we can go back from there.
And if we, if we have to adjust it at some point in time?
We can do a supplemental appropriation, yeah. What we also talked about today was the, in his pro forma statements, he used about a three and a half percent interest rate for these first couple of bond issues, and the rate now is below two on twenty-year bonds. So what we're looking to do is, coupled with the refinancing of two thousand and fifteen debt, we're going to issue, so say we're up to, say forty-six, forty-seven, when all of a sudden it's a million dollars. We're going to issue bonds enough that we can keep our debt service somewhat steady, take advantage of these low interest rates, and then we'll issue notes for the additional amount. So say it's ten million dollars is the magic number to keep our debt service somewhat consistent. The other thirty-seven, we'll do one-year notes at that point. But we will get a little more fine-tuned as we progress down the, down the ballpark. But that's what we're looking at now, is the roughly forty million for those two, plus the two roofs. So again, forty-seven, forty-eight could be fifty. I don't know, the number's going to end up being. But a portion of that, we're going to do a bond to keep the debt service as level as possible, and the increased amounts, we'll do a one-term, one-year note, and the rates of those are ridiculously low as well. So it's a very good time to be in the market. So we're going to take advantage of it best we can. Originally, our thought was to do short-term notes for everything, but again, if we can capture some of these very low bond rates for twenty years, let's lock in that now as well, and keep our debt service somewhat consistent.
I just have one other question, and it's for information for our next budget thing, is one of the questions that was asked prior to tonight's meeting was the fund balance percentage for the last several fiscal years. So I noticed, you know, there was a significant increase in the unassigned fund balance, and the percentage also went up for year-ending six thirty, twenty. So how much could we take out of there to stay at a percentage, to go down one percent in that seventeen point six nine? If we went down to sixteen point six nine, what would that number be?
I suppose the number would be a quarter.
Okay.
It's percent of the subsequent year's budget.
Correct.
So the budget, what we're at, fifty-five now, so five hundred and fifty thousand would be one percent.
But does that, so that includes the three fifty that's already in the budget?
Yeah.
So it would be an additional two hundred thousand, or five hundred thousand?
No, it'd be five fifty, uh, not...
On top of the three, on top of the three fifty that's in there. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have under CIP, if anyone else has anything.
All right. Do we have anything for education?
No, because they are on school break this week, and there was, there was someone that was going to come, but with the short, you know, not as many, we just, we told them not to come tonight, that, since we weren't finalizing the budget tonight anyway. So they'll be here next week.
All right, so then number three, number four?
Right, three, four, and five, we can't do.
Okay. Absentee ballot option.
The governor signed another executive order, ten E, which now has extended a reason by which you can request an absentee ballot to include COVID like he did last year in the primary during the election. So the residents will have that option if they choose not, the polls will be open. But if they would prefer not to go to the polls, just like they did in the primaries and the election, they can now request absentee ballot. That's the difference. The Secretary of State's office is not going to be mailing absentee ballot applications. It goes back to the way it was. They still have to request it, but they will have that COVID reason on there. They will include that in the new absentee ballot application that should be online. That will link to our website. So that just means we may have a lot of absentee ballots again, but I'm hopeful that I can handle that with myself, my deputy, and the temporary person that I had in mind to hire that, thank you, by the way, she started on Monday. She helped me through the election last year, so she's, she's already trained on absentee ballots. So we're hopeful that we can do that, with just the three of us on the weekends. The other thing is that he had also authorized us to use the ballot box, the absentee ballot box, which we took out to protect for the winter. They asked us originally to remove them and protect them because of the salt and the snow. And we said, could we ask, I did ask the option, could we leave it in? We said, yes, but if anything gets damaged, it's on you to repair it or replace it. So we took it out, so we do have it. So we will be putting that back in place for the residents to use. He also extended, normally absentee ballots need to be in, we issue them up to the day before the election for the referendum, and they normally would have to mail them or bring them back in by, you know, that day. We never, with the use of the absentee ballot box, that was extended, that the residents can put them in the ballot box up until eight PM. So that was also extended for the referendum. So basically, everything that was in place will be in place this year for the referendum. That was the big thing. There have been some, when we go to our budget referendum, do the budget process, and some of the smaller towns that have town meetings that adjourn to the referendum, usually you do it with something that's called less than three weeks' notice, which means we are not allowed by law to mail out absentee ballots. And that has been taken away so that we can mail out the ballots when a resident requests them. We can mail them, they can download, the applications and the ballots, I mean, the applications, we couldn't do that. They have to pick them up. That has also been waived in the executive order, so the residents request them, we can mail them. The key with that is normally, again, the date issue, where we, state laws to obligate us to mail them the day before an election or primary, even though we knew the residents couldn't get them back. That's been waived. We have to determine, which I will determine with the post office, I'm going to call the post office. The town clerks have to make sure that they can mail the ballots, so that the residents receive them the day before the referendum, so the Monday before. So I'm going to coordinate with our two post offices to see what that deadline is. We are instituted, so that the residents will know, we'll put that out on the website. So I have to do that. The other thing was the towns, when they adjourn to referendum, or even, I think you guys have the option, instead of adjourning within fourteen days, I say, well, I've awaited that, which means they can now, you can make your referendum date later than that, if you wanted to move it by a vote of your legislative body. I think we're fine, as long as you approve everything next week. I've already coordinated with Atkins, they can print everything. I have to have, once you approve the question, I have four days to get the absentee ballots, and Atkins has told me, if you do approve it next week by the twentieth, they'll get me the ballots. So we're okay, we're on schedule.
So it's up to us to approve by next Wednesday?
Uh, next Tuesday, the twentieth, okay.
And people can request them by what, just calling your office, or is there an email request option?
They have to tell the application.
Application.
It's just the Secretary of State mailed the applications last year. They won't, that won't be happening. The residents will have to download the application or request me to mail it, so they have to mail it back, and then we'll get the ballot, or they can walk in to the office.
One question, do you feel, I know you have help now to get you through, till you have an assistant. You know, for the elections going forward, in the event, I mean, I know we don't know what's going to happen, even post-COVID, if, do you feel like you have the resources that you need in the event that this sort of dynamic of voting, absentee, increased use of absentee ballot, what would happen if the state legislature expands that?
No, I do not. We, they really need to, if they want to change this process, which is fine, and if you look at other states that have this process, they have an elections division, they have a whole separate division that handles that, because people think elections are only in November. My life starts in January and in February with the reports and the different things that we have to do. The town, getting the list of offices, which I just received, which I'll be mailing out to the town chairman tomorrow. There's a lot more that goes on behind the scenes. It's a year-long process. And in some years, you know, we have the budget referendum, we could have town committees, we could have primaries, and then the election. Presidential year, you have the presidential primaries separate from the other primaries. So, no, we do know, and I think the Secretary of State's office realizes, or hopefully, the process has to change. And they may have to think about taking it out of the town clerk's offices, because that's not our only duty, not our only function. So, no, we probably are not prepared in our offices to make change this. Thank you for asking. So are there any other questions? I just wanted you to be aware of the executive order and what it means for the budget referendum.
So you don't need anything from us right now?
Right now, no. I'm, I think if I hear now, it'd be, I guess I'm used to working Saturdays and Sundays, so I don't know. I envision that maybe.
Thank you. Memorial Day Parade.
Yes, so I'm bringing back information from my conversation with the health director and his conversation with the state that the raids are permissible, and they're leaving it up to the localities and municipalities to make that decision, based on their guidelines following the organized outdoor gatherings, and so masks and social distancing are highly recommended, but it is entirely a local decision. So that's where we're at, and looking for guidance on whether you think that's a prudent thing to do.
I'm for it. I'm for having it.
How are we going to enforce masks and social distancing? You can't tell the police to go out there and arrest people. It's outside.
I, you know, we talked about the potato fest, and we talked about the parade, you know, just briefly, like, brought them up. I, you know, we talked about the Potato Fest, and we talked about the parade, you know, just briefly, like, brought them up. And I was thinking that the parade would be a little bit easier to semi-manage or allow citizens to manage themselves to, I guess, to a degree. And to try to bring some, begin to bring some normalcy back. But it goes with some risk, too. I, you know, but those are the thoughts that I was having. But I, you know, we probably need the whole council here.
Is there a way to do a memorial celebration? That's not like parades of crowds of people everywhere, but like, have like a more controlled memorial so we can both honor our servicemen and women, do it in a way like that, without having like, forcing all of our public safety officials, everybody else to be, that's a huge lift for them to go out and do that. I mean, maybe, maybe that's fine, but there may be an in-between somewhere.
So, so last year, because we could not have the parade at all, we put an ad, like, an ad in the Totucket Times for Memorial Day. It was like a half-page ad or something, so that we still recognized it. And was there a small ceremony? Right, wasn't there a small ceremony?
Yes.
That was held. So that's, that's what we did last year, because it was right at the beginning of COVID, and it was really difficult, but we still wanted to recognize it. So I think it's, I agree with Tom, I think we need the whole council here to target, you know. Can we make a decision next Tuesday? Is that still time enough? I know Memorial Day is, you know, six weeks after that.
Can we get, we will get a new short update by next Tuesday, right? In terms of projections on vaccinations and all that sort of stuff?
Of course, yes.
I think we really need that now more than ever to make this kind of a decision.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Joe, because we have talked, I have talked to Mike about it. We'll have our Thursday morning meeting, I'll get those, the data that he presents there, I'll bring to Tuesday's meeting.
But also vaccinations, and projections for vaccinations by mid-May.
Okay, yeah.
Because I think, everybody's eligible for 16 and up, and what are they projecting is going to actually be done by the middle of May?
Yeah, we were, we were, I think I reported out last time, and the data overall, we were at 43, 43% almost. And I think we're probably at this point broken close to 50. I'll see what we have. But again, one of the, one of the concerns is, when you look at vaccinations, great, but there's nothing under 16. So, you know, again, for families, you know, looking at children and gatherings, and the question we ever had about, about, you know, enforcement. We just have to, I think, if we do decide to go forward, we've got to publicize and leave it to the, to the residents to understand that they have to self-police it.
And we don't do the thing at the firehouse afterwards. I mean, that, that should probably be out.
Yeah, I think, and.
Just, you know, because that's a gathering.
Everything outside.
Creative about how it looks and how we go through it. So it'll take a little extra thought to do that, but I can certainly get the numbers and look at the projections and what we think will be for, for May. But I think we're hovering and creeping up on 50% at this point in time. So by May, I don't know where we'll be, but we'll try to find out.
Is that for tonight?
That's where we are. I didn't adjust the pilot, but that's roughly where we are.
Exactly, the number I gave.
Look at that. Look at that.
Now, the mill rate increased. And we're at .66, and now with all the changes we made.
.55.
What are we doing to make that?
We're going to take, now it's.
I'll make sure.
Yep.
So do we want any more, any other discussion at this point on the parade, other than Mike's going to gather some data?
Have it on the agenda Tuesday night.
And also, in the data, can you also let us know what the surrounding shoreline towns are doing? Are they doing ceremonies, or are they doing parades?
Or, some of them, it was in the paper today, there are some that are.
Maybe we can lead the way.
In COVID or parades?
Nobody has to, nobody has to go.
It's true. Well, kids with their parents don't get to decide, I guess.
Okay. Number eight.
Okay, so number eight is, I had asked to put this on the agenda with the appointment of Victor P. D. Andrea to the PPBC Committee Permanent Project. And this was based on a conversation Al Rose had called me and asked. They need someone with electrical background. They all have general knowledge, but for the high school project, electrical and security is approximately a third of the cost of the new high school that it's involved, that. And Victor is on the permanent project for the police department. And so he had asked if there was some way he could come on to the committee to help them with the high school project. And so initially, I talked to the town attorney very quickly, and there is an opening under an alternate. So we thought that that would be a good way to do it. But then I forgot about the whole stipulation in the charter about you can only serve on one board or commission. And he's already on the police commission. And this, and so even though it's an alternate, it would be the permanent project building committee. But I did talk to previous council members, and they thought that there was a opinion by John Gesmande, or one of the former town attorneys, in regards to someone being able to be on the permanent project and also on another board or commission, because the permanent project is a committee, not a board or commission. So I would like to table this so that the town manager can check to see if there is an opinion already, if we have a legal opinion on that already. And if not, if you could, if there isn't one, then can you check that out with the committee?
I have one, I remember that, because I was here when that happened. It was Jack Zephyr.
Oh, Jack Z, they said Jack Prescott, but.
Jack was chairman of Permanent Project Building Committee, and there was a vacancy on the town council. So you appointed, you wanted to appoint Jack to the town council. And I think there was one project he wanted to stay on, it was like a five-month, and it was something that they allowed him to stay on for five months, till that project was finished on permanent project and beyond town council. It was like, I don't know if it's an exact opinion, but I'll look it up.
Yeah.
But that's the gist of why that happened, it was a temporary.
Okay, if you could just, if we can just have that information for the next.
But just to clarify, there was, it was like a temporary, just to finish the project, so.
Okay. If you could just look that up for the, we can just table this until Tuesday night's meeting, and then see what it is on there, that would be great. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to table, or?
Do you need a motion to table?
Michelle, what's it, if you want a formal motion to table?
Do you need a move to table, or just push it to the next agenda?
Well, this was a special means, I'll make a motion to table to our next regular council meeting on April 20th.
Second.
And then, ball in favor? Aye.
And then adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor? Aye.